Take item K off. We weren't able to do any research on that, so we can approve it next week.
Okay, we will delete. Item K.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the one item K struck.
Motion by Stevens. Support.
Also by Anderson.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson, to strike item K for, from the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye aye's, motion carries. We have switched things up because after going to my retreat and also our trustee, that we should bring citizens' comments up to the beginning in case there's anything on the agenda you would like to talk about. You can talk it before. So, look it over quickly and, not quickly, and I'll take any comments. Yeah, we can, I, I, I will if anybody has some help, still let them talk. Just seeing how it works. Well, you can go ahead and tell them what we've talked about, your road is...
We're still having very bad water issues. Very bad. We just sent thousands of dollars of new culvert and gravel in Saturday morning. I just showed her...
Yeah, it's very bad.
It's very bad. And I know we're working on Rain City Highway, like, when I asked you to sit down by the gas station, yes, no. Come. Yes. But it's not really any of our problems at all.
So, I had told her I will call Mike again tomorrow. I had called Mike...
And he did come over our house that day, the next day, and said that they were going, going to do something, you know, but...
And he said they were first on the list, but she don't know, we don't wish...
What list?
What list they're on.
They're doing everything on the main roads, but nothing on our road.
Right, so we don't know...
And you live on Church Road, no?
Yes, which is their, their road to maintain and take care of, so I will call Mike again, and also Kirk Weston also.
I mean, you saw the videos.
Yeah, it, it's bad, it is really bad.
They're going over the big drainage ditches, they're coming on our side of the road, all the way back, I mean, our house is, I don't know, 200 feet back, all the way back to the house.
And I don't know why they can't do something for your road because they got COVID money to work with.
That's not what Mike said. If someone has something, they had them.
Well, he, he doesn't, he, maybe his, he doesn't, but the commissioners do, so we'll see what they can do, okay?
Have you folks tried to talk to the road commissioners?
Oh, they've been to our house.
Okay.
Yeah.
They, they put up the water over road signs in front of our house.
No, I mean, I know, I'm not the crews, but the actual, the free...
Well, Mike has been, the guy, Mike, I don't know what my husband's...
Mike is the foreman.
Right.
Yeah.
He's been to our house.
Right. Well, there's, the road commission is ran by three, they have three road commissioners. They're appointed by the county board of commissioners. Sometimes if you want to get some action done, go see them.
He's, my husband has called the drainage commission, the road commission, and we just get the same five years now.
Yeah, but sometimes when you do it in person, you make, you make more...
He's a young man, I don't think you want him to go up there first. Why, that's why I'm here, he's not.
Yeah, well, sometimes a face-to-face is kind of more effective than phone calls.
What, call to the road commission, or?
Yeah, I mean, they have...
Or we call them, make sure that they're there.
Yeah, well, they have...
They have meetings.
Yeah, they have regular meetings.
We, I look for their meetings like this, I have not seen that.
I have a list, call me and I'll tell you when they meet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I looked on the, because they don't have on their website, when the...
I, I have a list, I just got it. Call me and I'll let you know.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty professional, though.
Sounds like they need a squeaking wheel.
Well, over by Century, the trucking place, I don't know what drainage, is that Mysec or?
That's the Pelton drain.
Yeah, the Pelton, well, they clean that a lot, and that was because I, I went to Tim Hortons, and it was really running there. Now, where, at the corner where Cameron's is, that's where it stops, and, and it's like...
The road commissioners, they like to get citizens in, because they, it, they rely on stuff they get from the foremans in the field. There's like three districts in the county, but they, when they hear it from, sometimes it gets filtered when it goes through the foreman, but when they hear it directly from the residents, they can hear about issues they were unaware of.
She's called the road commission and the drainage commission.
Do you drain into the Pelton?
I'm sure Dennis, but Dennis is next to us, because they're draining the culvert, no, they're just, they're, I'm surprised they're not here either, because...
Do you drain into the Pelton drain?
No, she's not Pelton.
Not?
She's not...
We're on the west side of...
She's not... Did you get a tax bill just recently?
I don't know. I, no, I haven't got, it goes on mortgage companies, so...
Because if you're paying into a drain district, it will be on that mortgage bill of what drain you're in and how much you pay per year. Pelton drain is a 20-year, we're about in year six of a 20-year with the Pelton. That's the most expensive drain in this part of the county, and not only is it a drain, but there is a maintenance fee on top of it. So, there's a lot of work that's supposed to go under that Pelton drain, and if you're anywhere around that...
It's, it's on, we are on the west side and on the south side of...
I'll just look up your, your tax bill, and I'll see if there's any drains on your tax bill, and that'll tell you. When you go to the road committee, the, the drain commission, this is the drain, you know, and you tell them where the water is laying, and why is it not running towards the Pelton? They've been working on this for a long time.
We have two pellets, we have two cords of base, that was floating, and that's by our house, that was floating, floating.
This culvert that you put in, was that in the direction of the road commission? Is it the right size?
Oh, yeah, I have a permit, and that is it, oh, yeah.
So, they know all about this. Then I would, I would go right up to, if next time the road commissioners meet, you, you've talked to your crew chief, and if he hasn't gotten anything from them, then it might take a face-to-face and just say, "You show me," because this is what, you show them the pictures. You show them, and I want to see, I want you to see your tax bill to see if you're on a drainage district, because that'll make a difference, too.
And I'll give you the meeting. I'll give the whole thing?
Yeah.
I'll give meetings.
I'll let my husband come up with...
There's a lot more of us that'll go.
Well, okay, then, I'll give it to you.
That's what gets their attention.
Yeah, they, they meet there, there in St. Clair Township, right off, right near the airport.
Yeah, that's where I went to get the culvert, yeah. I was, I was already up there screening, like, to use, when it was bad. I was doing it face-to-face.
Well, when you meet with the commissioners, they're in charge of the whole...
They're in charge of the money is what they're in charge of, and that's what you need.
And they could prod the engineers.
Aren't they elected officials?
Well, they're appointed.
They're appointed, huh?
Yeah, they're appointed by the county board commissioners, who are elected.
The drain commissioner.
That's what I thought one of them was.
Yeah, Mr. Wiley is the drain commissioner.
He looks very nice.
He's, he's very nice, and I'll tell you what, there's been a lot done on the drains in St. Clair County since he's been the commissioner, the, the head of the, of the department, really. We had 20, maybe 30 years of someone who did absolutely nothing, and Mr. Wiley's been playing a catch-up game for a long time.
Right.
He's at the drain commission, Mr. Wiley?
He's, yeah, Mr. Wiley is the drain commissioner.
All right, any other comments from the citizens? Like I said, call me tomorrow, I'll get you a copy of everything, okay? All right, next to our consent agenda. Has everybody looked at everything that's included? Have any questions on it?
I have a quick correction for the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Just, I'm asking spelled on in one spot.
Okay, what, and where?
It's okay, wait.
We'll call you.
It's, it's... That's, that's my husband's phone, right?
Okay.
It's, I'll show the...
Okay, just, all right, then.
Okay.
Then we'll just make a motion.
I see it.
I make, okay, you make, I make motion to approve the consent agenda with the one correction to the minutes.
Support.
Motion by Stevens. Oh, that was supposed to be a roll call. Oh, it was still, like, hang on. Motion by Stee, we're getting used to this new thing, motion by Stevens, supported by Goldston. Like a roll call vote.
Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Helleen?
All motions, all roll call votes were yes, motion carries. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is the appointment of Keith Telford to the planning commission for a three-year term.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to re, to appoint Keith Telford to another three-year term.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Goldston.
He, I, I mean, Keith has really blossomed.
Yes.
Is the chairman. Yeah, he, yeah, he came, I remember when Bill Supervisor, Bill would come to every planning commission meeting, but that kind of, in some ways...
Intimidating.
Yeah, you have to let people do their job.
Exactly.
And when Bill started, you know, because of his illness, not able to come, that's where Keith really blossomed.
Yes.
And he's effective, he's proactive.
Yes.
We're very fortunate. I mean, right now, our planning commission is the best I've seen it in like 20 years.
I agree.
We have two business owners on there, one guy's a tradesman, another one works for a DPW, so we have a good, broad perspective.
That's good.
And you have one person who has a lot of institutional memory on it.
Okay. All in favor?
Can you be a roll call?
No, it's not.
No, no, it's not. All in favor, Stevens by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye aye's. Okay, next on the agenda is to appoint Hugo Mancini to the ZBA for a three-year term.
I'll move to appoint Hugo Mancini for another three-year term, as is on the board.
I'll support.
Goldston. Supported by Stevens. Motion, motion by Goldston, supported by Stevens, to reappoint Hugo Mancini to ZBA for a three-year term. All in favor, Stevens by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye aye's, motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is a letter from Shelley Baumhuster about Mr. Tuma taking care of this case that we have pending with Mark, Mark and Camille Miller, and about the appraiser that we have to hire, so it's up to you guys, which one did you...
I have a question.
Sure.
If we carry in the tribunal, how long will it take to make up the difference in taxes for the expenses?
Well...
I mean, do we expect there to be a return, or is this...
Yes, yeah.
Do we have any idea what that...
Well, the thing is that we, you know, we can't let them get away with just having a tax for $150,000 on a thing. We've got to fight it, and if we don't have the right appraiser to show that it's...
Well, I have a problem with what we're doing. I'm just curious about how long the costs of doing this will be made up by additional tax revenues.
I can't tell you.
Just a relevant question.
Couldn't tell you? I don't do the taxes, and that would be a Shelley question?
Yeah, but I, I see he has two, Jim Hartman...
Right.
For 4,500 plus a thousand-dollar additional fee for the trial.
Yeah.
The other bill in then is five to seven thousand for an appraisal of 250,400.
And they said either one, Mr. Tuma would, would hire, it just depends on who you want, would want him to hire.
What is the difference in here and in the second paragraph? We're talking about a restrictive report for 4,500, or you can get a full summary for the additional thousand. What is the difference between that?
Probably, um...
No, I would, I would think that it would be, uh...
A full summary?
The word two, I'm trying to think of the word, and it's not coming to me. It's the investigative, it's, it's the due diligence in investigating the former price, the correct price of what we think, of what we think the appraisal should be.
So, it sounds, it sounds like in his letter, it said that he can complete the restrictive report for 4,500, which may suit our purposes, and then enhance it if needed.
And he go to trial. If we, if we lose this and we go to trial, there will be more information needed by the attorney.
Whereas the other one, he didn't really specify that he would, it was just the...
Yeah.
Right.
But you have to understand, this is a...
Big kick.
This is a multi-million dollar property.
I think so.
And we're being lowballed on this, and the assessor just says, "How can I, how can I assess Golden Hop at this rate?" And then I'm looking here.
True.
No, it's obvious that it's a lowballed.
We already have.
All right, I guess I...
Yeah, I have another question. So, Mr. Tuma, either one, either one of these attorneys?
He's fine with either one.
And then when we make the motion, we need to, to make sure that we say that the attorney is hiring.
Yes, yes. Mr. Yotuma.
I make a motion, I make a motion that Mr. Tuma hires an appraiser to do my ass here.
Just, you didn't just say his name, whoever you want.
Oh.
That, that'll make it easier.
Mr. Hartman is our appraiser for the tribunal case.
Right.
Dennis?
Yeah, Dennis, that's enough.
Tuma. I saw that on the short there, and kindergarten, it's not a Tuma.
Right, Dan?
Yeah. Goldston, okay. Motion by Anderson for Mr. Tuma to hire Jim Hartman to handle the case of Mark and Camille Miller. We don't need to put the amount in for 4,500 dollars.
We should put the amount in.
Yeah, but we have 4,500.
Dollars.
With an additional thousand.
With an additional thousand dollars if needed.
You got that, baby?
Yeah, and if we go to trial, how much is it?
A thousand dollars.
Okay, thousand.
If we go to trial. This will be a roll call.
A title search, that's the term I was looking for.
Okay, there you go, okay.
Patty?
Uh, yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Helleen?
Yes.
All roll call votes were yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the bill from Network Computers, one scanner, printer, scanner, printer. It's the networking, two monitors, one dual-monitor card and networking with a total of 2,2239.92.
I have a couple things I want to...
Bring up?
Yes, okay, so, we were talking to Devon, the trainer today.
Yeah.
And he said that we're gonna need to get a scanner also, so we can scan stuff in our office, and he said probably the same scanner.
Okay, so that would be another.
So, should we wait till next month to approve that, or can we...
Well...
The same exact one as this one?
All right, but we've already, we should go ahead and tape this because we brought...
That's fine, okay.
Yeah.
And then, on the last invoice, the, um... The long-range access points, I'm assuming that's to give the Wi-Fi upstairs. Does he, did he do anything with that yet?
I don't, no, I, I don't think so.
Do you want me to hold on, hang that part of it, until he gives them, on the last page of the...
Okay, wait a second.
The network thing. The, the 299.98, the, the third thing on there. I'm assuming that's what that is.
One in the office and one in the, that, wasn't that done in Shelley's room?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
I think he's already done that.
But did he do the one in the hall? Do we have that one? Because we asked him to get a Wi-Fi extender upstairs, because I remember a lot of times we have hard times to get the Wi-Fi upstairs when we run through the...
But it says, oh, in the hall, hall, hall. One in the office.
Can we deal with these folks all the time, Jordan?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, let's pay for it and then...
We just need to make sure we follow up, if you can follow up.
I will follow up and make sure that it followed through.
Okay.
Okay? All right, yeah.
Okay, ask for a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion, we pay a network computer 2,239 dollars and then two cents for one scanner, printer, networking, two monitors, one dual-monitor, video card networking.
Support.
Support.
Goldston. This will be a roll call vote.
Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Helleen?
Yes.
Um, all roll call votes were yes, motion carries. Let me put it on, let me write that down to call Brian. Brian. Roll call, roll save, roll. The hall and the office.
The Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi?
Yeah. A booster, I don't have a...
Wi-Fi. Okay, next on the agenda is to pay the park taxes for the 97 acres of the lake.
I make a motion to pay the parks and parks taxes for 660,000 dollars and so on.
Support.
Motion by Steve Anderson, excuse me, and supported by Stevens to pay our park taxes, would be a roll call vote.
Patty?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Helleen?
Yes.
All roll call votes were yeses, motion, motion, motion carries. Okay, next, did you just save the date? There it have been, the annual MTA St. Clair chapter on February 17th in Alexander's in Marysville. More details will come.
I plan to go.
Okay. I will probably, I might take my deputy's question, all right. But let me find out more about it.
They, they'll have more information, okay. Big news, our, we got our passport grant of 56,200 dollars. We had a big write-up in the Times Herald, which is great.
I think this is the Voice.
It's the Voice, yeah, I thought it was the Voice, but you said the Times Herald and...
No, I was, I was wondering for the Times Herald.
It was in the Voice, which means that we can carry on with phase one and get started, there's things that has to be done. I know that there would, what helped us put us over the top together was getting that sign up there that we finally...
Yeah, they have not installed the...
I, I noticed that, I was by there and I'm gonna...
I drove by there in the morning, I was...
I'm gonna give them a call and find out what's going on, but that other sign that we had that we put up...
Right.
That we permanently, like, set it up there, I took another picture and sent them, and another letter from, um...
Well, that's not the actual medallion, the actual medallion I have right now.
I have, no, but it, it looked good.
Okay, good.
It looked good, and they gave us extra points for it, and also a letter...
Get on the ball and sink that in the ground.
I know, they, and we got extra points for a letter that was, we sent in from Blue Water, um, Blue Water Handicap.
Right.
And that put us to 185 points, which helped, that's what helped us get it.
But it's staked, I mean, I staked it out, it's clear as day, we're supposed to...
I know, I will call the Phillips.
They may have to take down the two spruce trees on either side, they may be...
No, they're not in the way, but we'll see, we'll see what they need.
They need some TLC.
They need trimming up, that's all, we need trimming up.
I feel like we had the same conversation last night.
We did. That's the one.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Sure.
The stuff that needs to get worked on, like, when do we have to start and who?
I'm, I'll get a little Pam blow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As soon as...
Yeah, I mean, legal description...
Contractors before the spring, before they ready, get all booked up.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, once we get that, they're like, next month, start interviewing them.
Eastman's.
So, who, who does that?
Pam, Pam, Pam will start that. And so, the local matching funds. Uh, we have our matching funds in our, in our, our matching funds out of our...
Recreation fund.
Recreation fund in there, okay. Next on the agenda, um, does everybody read this letter from John?
Yeah.
And we used to have an engineering company, SSOE.
Right.
And it's to our benefit if we hire him to work with the planning commission.
Yeah.
To, instead of them going to a separate person to do the planning for the people that come through our planning department, to vote right to John, and that way he will do the site plans, they will pay him for the site plans, he'll know our ordinance, if the Wolfie know anything about it, it's a great thing.
Yeah, it's, he said all these are passed under the law.
So, it's nothing, he's just our engineer.
Engi...
And it's gonna be great, because we're gonna have a lot of work coming through up on 26th Mile.
It will be consistent.
It'll be consistent.
Yeah, and John, through the years, we've noticed that when he's an engineer for an applicant, rarely there's anything major wrong with his site plan, usually just little adjustments. John is, I think, is great, he's always good to work with.
Yeah.
Even tempered and...
Yeah, so, so, I, we probably need to make a motion that...
I make a motion to hire John Monte, a project control engineer, as the consulting engineer. I make a motion to hire John Monte, a project control engineer, as the consulting engineer.
Oh. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, aye.
No, it doesn't, cause we're not paying. Next on the agenda is from Brenda Loper and Linda T. Asking an increase in our hourly salary and vacation days, from to fifty cents and two days extra on vacation.
A little super thick now.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
It was later on in our agenda here, we're gonna talk about the handbook.
Do you wanna hold off on that until we get to that?
No, I just wanna throw this out there.
Okay.
In the handbook, we, and, and we're gonna discuss the handbook, we don't necessarily have to approve it.
Okay.
But we did cap vacation after use.
Okay.
So now they're asking for a two-day, so if we do that, we need to adjust. And also, I would like to recommend for, for last year, that we start doing performance reviews, I, on an individual employee basis, because like, you know, everybody has their own department, their own jobs.
Right.
So that, you know, we're being together, so I'm just throwing it out there.
I think that's a very good idea.
I think so too. I agree.
But as to the request for pay raise.
For this year?
Yeah, this year, from Ms. Loper and Ms. T, I would suggest that we give them the twenty dollars that they ask, and we can discuss later.
Vacation.
The vacation.
So just do the pay.
Right now, we'll just do the pay raise.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good, very good.
Well, good for you.
Well.
Linda.
I stamped it, good.
She, she said, well, wasn't she? Okay, right, so for right now, we'll take the motion for the pay raise, okay?
Okay, I'll support her.
I, no, I can't do the motion, I.
I do the motion.
She did the motion, okay.
Yeah.
Motion by Colleen.
And I support. You do both of them. So it seems like Brenda's really cutting her teeth into the new software there.
Yeah, we are, that's gonna be a good thing.
Okay, my, motion by Colleen is spurred by Stevens to give pay raise to Colin Loper and Linda T. from nineteen-fifty to twenty dollars, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Well, all roll call votes were yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda is revoke permit, bond thirty-nine forty-two from two thousand eighteen for five thousand seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. Read the note.
I will make your motion at bond thirty-nine forty-two from two thousand eighteen for five thousand seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, be revoked and returned to the township.
Is that on the building permit?
That was what it says on the building permit.
Well, I asked him to, all he had to do was pull a coming permit and fill out the paperwork and he would have gotten it.
So I'll support that.
Motion by Colleen spurred by Stevens to revoke bond thirty-nine forty-two will be a roll call vote.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
All righty. Next on the agenda is, as everybody has heard in the news about Kentucky and all of that, I went to a meeting with district commissioner Dave Vanderbusch. He's got money from his district, and what he chooses in his money are his for emergency alerts, and he's willing to give us the money. All we'll have to pay is a third of the cost of, for two sirens.
Where are we gonna go to?
One will be here at the township and one will be in our park.
Okay, no, that's, I was actually.
I figured that out. Who helped me? Jennifer?
The township is in the middle of the, the building is in the middle of the township.
Yeah, she, and Colleen helped me, one in, one at our park.
Because I don't want that thing near my house.
Right, you know, it makes sense.
I said, I don't want that thing near my house, you wouldn't have fun with cars.
That's true, I mean, he's willing to give.
Well, you'll, the first time that siren goes off, you'll be aware of it.
By the BP, the line over by the BP.
From our.
So it will alert all of Adir from, from that location.
Yeah.
It will alert Adir.
It's just, just east of the expressway.
Right.
Well, and it looks like, I don't know.
And if you look.
Okay, and you're hearing those.
Yeah, and this is right in the middle, so.
When, when I attended St. Augustine School there, Richmond, they had two fire alarm, one of them was right there.
Yeah.
And I mean, you would get the whole glass of this.
Yeah, I just don't want any, this is the first Saturday of the month, we're gonna sound the siren, no.
No, no, the county does.
Unless there's a hurricane coming, we're not sounding any sirens.
The county does do.
Well, they weren't hurricanes, so.
Well, they're, they're.
They were safe there.
All, all I have to do.
Trying to think of what it would be, tornado, I suppose.
The county does run, the county does run maintenance and.
And I think they have to do tests.
Tests on the sirens, it's only three minutes.
Is that something that we're made aware of before they do it?
Yeah, they, they alert.
Yeah, they alert.
But it's not like every time it goes off.
That's there.
At noon or whatever.
No, 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 that's not, not at noon. Maintenance.
The summer's now, but it's at noon.
Oh, that's good.
There is a four-hundred-dollar per year maintenance on it, but that, that will cover your batteries, that costs a lot of money, but if it saves a life, and Dave's willing, he just wants, and later down the road, Dave will be sending me a resolution to buy these, but right now, he just wanted me to explain.
Also, we're not going on.
No, we're not going on, I, I just needed to let, see if you guys were on board.
Yeah.
And I said, how could we not turn down money from you?
Yeah.
I mean, he included us, I mean, I think that's a great thing than another district.
The target will hit me at night like it did.
And that's another thing, they will alarm us if it's in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
Right. That's fantastic, so I thought that was a great thing, okay, all right.
Is everybody here on the wind system or something, cause we get a lot, we get notifications on the phone, they're loud.
Oh, I shut it off. I shut that off. I get mine off.
I get the no on.
Many of them are not, of any consequence.
Well, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I shut it off.
All right, next on the agenda is our township board meetings, they were all correct even for the election dates.
I didn't meet the.
I think they are.
Yeah, November first, yeah, that's.
Okay.
And what about August, August is ninth.
Yeah, August ninth, cause of.
Here, let me double check.
It is, cause it's August second, meet the election.
Gotcha. Okay, okay, I make motion to approve the date listed, do you want me to read off all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
January eleventh, February eighth, March eighth, April twelfth, May tenth, June fourteenth, July twelfth, August ninth, September thirteenth, October eleventh, November first, December thirteenth. And on all those dates, we start at seven PM here at.
West Side One Two, Melton Road.
Westwood Mission, eight zero six four.
There you go. Support.
I need a support.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson, to approve our meeting dates for two thousand twenty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion carries. Clerks Institute, Jennifer, you wanna explain to them about your institute?
Yeah, so we applied for a scholarship for the Clerks Institute, and I was contacted by a lady, and she, we had a nice little conversation, and she just wanted me to understand that if we did get the scholarship, it's a one-time scholarship, can't, like, the whole lifetime, I can never apply for another scholarship. But this is a three-year institute, so we need to make a commitment that even though there are, if, if we do get the scholarship, it would only be for one year, that the board is okay with paying for two years. I'm not sure how much it costs, but everybody I talk to, like, at the clerks meeting, it's, it's invaluable, it's, the information is, yeah, yeah, so.
Especially clerks, you get it.
You're right.
Everything changes so rapidly.
Lot of pressure these days.
Right, and it's a consecutive year, so like, if, if we go next year, we have to go to repeat it till the third, you know, yeah.
That would be good, because that will be within your term of office.
Exactly, exactly, so I just wanted to make sure that we're all good with that.
Yeah, sounds great.
So hopefully we'll get the scholarship for the first year.
All right, I hope so too.
Yeah.
Does the certification come out of the program?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Absolutely, and then once you finish that, there's another, like a master's, I don't know David, but it's called, but.
I think it's called a master's.
There you go, there you go.
That's a golf.
Right, okay. And the golf thing on the.
There you go. There it is.
Do you want a motion on this now?
I don't know, what do you think?
Well, we'd have to wait until.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
No, I think it's great.
All right, next onto employees handbook.
I don't know if you guys had a chance to look through it, and then I did bring our old one, so if, if you wanted to, if you guys wanted to look at it, or ask questions.
Kim, is it legal for us to have, for hiring to have veteran preference?
I don't know. Why, why could we?
Well, just a lot of company, I know the auto industry, we do, we have veteran preference, that you have a group of people, ones who are veterans, they get food at the top of the list.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't know about that.
All right.
Any, any changes to highlight?
Um, we did, we updated everything, because the last, the last thing we had in here, the cover page still had Karen Hill as a supervisor.
I would, I would just one where it says jury duty, also have slash military, you don't know if we ever gonna have a military reservist as our employee. Just jury duty slash military.
I don't even know anybody who's been called for jury duty.
You said it yesterday.
Did you really?
No, my husband did.
Really?
Yeah, I served jury duty a month ago.
Did you?
Yeah, with home doctor, McComb.
In McComb?
Yeah.
I was supposed to go.
But I still legally resident in McComb, my own property here.
Oh, I see.
But I still legally live.
I was supposed to go to federal.
I still live in McComb.
Yeah, I was supposed to go to federal court in Lake Onus, but the case, they called me out, we don't need to either get dismissed or.
Thank goodness, that could be years.
Who knows, they could have got sub lot of court.
Oh, my. Oh, I was kind of excited, I was going to. Oh, I guess they're gonna federal jury, that took like a year and a half.
Really?
Yeah.
Um, one thing we did see out in here, kinda, we have this weapons policy that you guys did a long time ago, and we had everybody sign it, and it's in, it's in the HR files. So we updated, and what we, oh, we didn't do our, I think we were gonna have everybody sign, but they received this. No, I just figured that was in the form of, I don't. Okay, we're gonna do like a form that everybody signs that says that they, they received a copy or that they read this, and it's gonna include the weapons policy, so if you don't have one on file.
Yeah, we, we had that after that, remember how we came about with that poll worker, the gentleman who was.
Yes. Joe.
Yeah.
That was a little.
All right.
And we did your job descriptions, because by law, that has to be.
Yeah.
So we did do that, we asked a while ago, some of the hourly, not appointed positions to do a job description, so we've included those in there.
Yeah, you talked about appraisals and documentation, that's huge, our workers here for our goal.
We have best in three counties, deputy treasurer and the assessor.
But you never know in the future if you had an issue, if you have a document available back you at all.
Well.
I've dealt with that.
If it's a document that has to do with assessing our treasury, you can better believe we've got those documents.
We don't have a weight, actually a weight scale anymore, how much they started, I know we talked about that, that we didn't think we needed one.
I don't, but we can discuss it.
Okay.
I'm just thinking if you have, like, you know, you hire someone to come, like, when we did the basement thing.
Yeah.
You wouldn't necessarily need to start them at fifteen dollars an hour, you could start them at ten. They might not necessarily, like, should they make the same as someone who's like, I don't know, you know what I mean?
Are you meaning the workers helping to clean it?
Whatever, yeah.
Well, I just.
Just for instance.
Right, no, I don't.
I think we should have some kind of weight scale.
Yeah, no, something like that shouldn't, because people up there, that's like a professional position.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, then we should have seasonal and, like, office, temporary should have a weight scale for office opening.
That's fine, then you have to decide where you're gonna cap it to.
Yeah.
And you cap it.
Right. I think we should.
Yeah, I mean, if we hire a temporary worker to help us with logistical items, that's, yeah, they cap it, but they shouldn't get paid as much as like the deputies, but that's a semi-professional position.
Well, in the, in current day, deputy, mine at least, has been here twenty years, so.
Right. Also. French benefits.
How does, how does this work for your election workers?
The election workers, I, I'm.
Completely separate.
Completely separate, cause they're not employees.
Yeah, they're not employees.
All right.
So that's.
And what, and it, is there, is there a minimum wage that we have to start annual or, or the election workers off, is there a state mandated?
No, there's not, but we approved last year, I can't remember.
I think they did. An increase and whatever that, that.
And then the.
That would be what we, that's what we had to.
Yeah, it would be that.
Yeah, and then last year, I was able to do a bonus for them because of the stuff that they had to do for us.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I was just, just because I have, I mean, I've done a year or four to do, and most businesses, it depends on the physician, every physician's different, every starting pay's different, depends on your, your, I, I might have more experience than somebody else coming in, you may pay them better, everyone, every person's unique, and you're hiring them and putting a dollar amount as a board and approving it. So that's where that scale comes in, and that way you're not constantly having to update this board, we're not retail, where you're starting everyone at a variable wage, and you're working your way up to management, whatever, that, you're not constantly updating that in here. There is a minimum wage that everyone has to follow as a state.
I wouldn't say minimum wage.
Most companies don't have the start, starting payment, it's just qualifications.
As an, I don't have that.
Yeah, and that's as a board and as a supervisor, whoever's firing that person will determine this is where I think they should be, as a board, you. Yeah, and that's as a board and as a supervisor, whoever's firing that person will determine, this is where I think they should be, and as a board, you decide whether to agree or disagree.
Alright, so, alright. How about fringe benefits, I see that.
Fringe benefits is working for me.
Well, we know that, um, I mean, most place, alright, so most places.
This is out of the ordinance book, this is where I got it from. That's how it's written in the ordinance, but I have the job for asking the same.
Yeah, thanks. That's how.
Fringe benefits to this job.
That was before me, that was before.
Yeah, I was before both of us, I just took it out of.
Then somebody screwed up.
There is no fringe benefits to this job.
I mean, I don't think we gave, I don't think we gave pensions to people when they didn't work here for at least a year.
I, she copied it.
I copied it word for word out of.
So then that would be something that we have to change in the ordinance, but that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I would say at least a year.
At least a year what?
To be working for us before they get a pension.
A pension?
Yeah.
Yes, everybody, you get what you get from.
For the, um.
For the prudential stuff, that we give them fifteen percent.
That's for January, we do.
Oh, oh, you're trying, oh, we have, oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
So the ordinance reads right now, it doesn't matter how much you work. They have to complete at least zero years of continuous employment or at least eighteen years old, so basically you need to work.
Somebody had to screw that up somehow.
But it, it does go off of what you worked that year, so if you only worked one day, you're only gonna get fifteen percent off that one day.
They have to work for a year anyway, don't they?
No.
No?
No. But it's fifteen percent of your gross, yeah, so if you, whatever your gross is.
But it's still money at work.
And that's the money that we send.
So Katie does fall into that.
Yes, Linda does fall under it, Brenda falls under it.
But y'all do, I'm just saying because she's the newest employee, she will fall, January first, she will still get that because she started.
Yes.
Right, it would just be fifteen percent of whatever she made.
Right, yeah, she's been here, yeah.
But she hasn't worked here, we're not saying, so if you look at it that way, in my first year, I started in July, I still, January first got.
Yeah.
So, but if it's something we want to change, it has to be changed in the ordinance.
Okay.
So right now, as it's worded.
Yeah. Okay.
But you guys decided you want to change it, then we need to like do that.
I didn't know that, wasn't worded in.
I'm telling you, that's workable.
Was it?
I don't know if you have it in there.
But if by law, if you offer it, it has to be in the handbook.
Okay.
It, it just does, so they know.
We did a lot of research on who you have to add in these. Yeah, it wasn't in here before.
Okay, alright, and then our ordinance.
Okay.
Who screwed up?
So make, I mean, like if you want to change it, maybe not. I mean, it doesn't really.
I mean, it really does.
Because like she said, I mean, if you work one day, you can get fifteen percent of one day's company.
Worth worrying about.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you for putting this together now, it's very nice.
So I guess the only change we have to do is add the military.
I highlighted it. That would be nice.
And then I will add like decide to put the form in there that they sign if they received it and what it.
So do you even need to have this part in there then?
If you want, I don't know, if you want to make sure that they've read that.
Yeah.
You're gonna read the whole thing, yeah.
Do we still have to do that W nineteen or whatever it is, prove that they're not aliens?
The I nine?
The I nine?
Yeah, the African boy, that's it, yeah, that would just be in the paperwork, that would be like, like if someone needs to, we give them this plus, you know, whatever.
Remember we had that pain commissioner who was a Canadian?
He was a good landing commissioner, he was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a board too?
So, you're gonna correct, bring that back when you put in the military or can we?
Well, I mean, I was gonna say we can approve it with us just changing that, so we have to bring it back, that was the only thing.
Okay.
Yeah, also too, in case of military or if you're on the volunteer fire department, if we have a number, is on.
That would be a bit, um, military, first responder. I mean, how are we gonna?
I mean, it's like civil, it's, um, when they call civic duty is like jury duty or military or if you're a volunteer fireman, it's.
If you're a volunteer fireman and you get called, you're going out of this building and doing your job.
Yeah, and they're not paying, so. I don't know if that works the same for voluntary firefighters, do their employers still pay them as if they were still at work? That's what this is saying, so if you get jury duty, you're still gonna get paid from the scholarship, why not jury duty?
Don't you also get paid from the agency that for whom you serve duty?
Usually, and I think you have to usually work, if your employer pays it, you have to give that back to the employer because you're getting your full pay.
Right. Does that need to be specified, is that just understood?
We could specify.
I could specify more of that.
That, that's what I had to do with Chrysler, whenever I did military duty, I'd submit a pay stub to them, they'd file, I'd file a lost time permit, they would make up the difference, so I would be a forty hour base pay.
So if we just want to make up the difference of the cost, so I can add that.
Yeah, that's.
Do you want us to bring it back so you can read it and do anything with it?
Sure, sure.
Alright, so we'll just make the changes and then put it on the agenda, okay. And then in the meantime, if you guys wake up.
See anything else?
Call, do you want to look into that ordinance and?
Yeah, yeah. Whatever, I'll call, call my buddy and say.
Right?
Right. Alright.
So we'll just, I guess.
You're agreeing with changes or we're just?
We're gonna bring it back, we're gonna, we're gonna bring it back from now on.
So we're gonna.
We can't say that, let me post, um, we're gonna postpone it until next month, I make a, do you like to have a motion for that or just?
Motion to postpone it.
Motion to postpone it until January twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Motion by Anderson. Supported by Stevens to postpone. To January. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Bye-byes. Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is upgrading the telephone system. Um, Jennifer, you want, or do you want her to explain it or you?
No, I can explain it, um, so we, we've been looking into upgrading our phone system so that when residents call, um, they can pick one for supervisor, just for clerk, straight for attorney, for the building department, zero operator, instead of all the, all the lines coming down. So we, we looked into that, we had Brian price it out, um, and he priced it out with Microsoft three sixty-five, um, and in the meantime, we're under contract with Comcast for another year, so we did look into Comcast and that, they have a system that's comparable to Microsoft three sixty-five, we have the same amount of lines, we have all the same kind of options. Um, our monthly cost for Comcast, like what we're paying now is almost four hundred dollars, right?
Yes.
And it would go down two hundred dollars?
Yeah, the bill will go down, the phones will go up, like you couldn't give me an exact quote because without taking it on and being able to redo, like it's just like if we call, they can't tell you what the package deal will exactly be, but they don't charge us for the equipment, the equipment's included, we don't have to buy it, if anything goes wrong, they replace it, it's all that stuff. They would come and put everything in for us, train us on everything, it's an automated reception service. And then, you know.
Then you're locked in for how long?
Do we get, do we get a choice on hold music?
Yes. Wish we could still get with the, everyone with their personal.
Yeah, both of them have that.
So, but basically when it comes down to it, we would be paying more for Comcast.
It's a little bit more, yeah.
But we wouldn't have to buy the equipment, we would always have, we have to, did you do a spreadsheet with it or?
I know I did.
Okay, we were gonna do a breakdown, are you in training? I think, yeah, I, we were kind of just bringing this to discuss it.
Yeah, that's right.
Get everybody's feeling on it because I really do think we need to update our phones.
We do.
We need to get with the times.
As we are right now, we can't even add other phone lines, like Roland's office, it would be nice to put a phone line in our phone system.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's good.
So which, which way do you guys think we should go, should we do Comcast, should we do?
I think Comcast. Will you, which way do you guys like? You liking Brian's or?
I, the only reason I'm not gonna like Brian's is because we have to buy the equipment, so if something happens to the equipment in a year, we're gonna wind up having to pay for it, whereas Comcast is all provided, so if your headset goes out, just come up and say, hey, I need a new headset, you're gonna send it to me.
That's why.
I just say one more thing, I'm sorry, I don't.
That's fine, you did need, just is a simpler system than three sixty-five, we already had issues with the office three sixty-five and it's a little bit more of a complication.
It's hard to, it's hard to navigate, and it really is.
Comcast.
We're all having issues navigating.
Takes it.
I think Comcast will be an easier transition.
Great.
Right, so we have a board approval law, we'll vote on it and if we can, we'll just go ahead with this, so then we'll just extend, like we have another year, so basically if we do it. It automatically, it restarts our contract for years, so we don't necessarily have another two years, so it's just two years. Yeah, okay, alright, let's, let's do it, okay. Okay, well, we have the board.
Alright.
I made a motion.
I made a motion that we select the Comcast phone system.
Yes. Okay, support?
Support.
Motion by Stevens, spurred by Colleen, to implement the Comcast, um, upgrade a telephone system in our offices. This will be a roll call.
Katie?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Sam?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Ali?
Yes.
All votes were yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda is unfinished business, I just brought this back to the table because we said we would. Um, I have talked to other supervisors, none of, none of them approved this, I have seen two-one-one on TV, they're getting money hand over fist. I would say we do nothing. Well.
So, and we don't have to like?
We don't have to do anything.
I think that I, through Chrysler, through United, I don't think to listen.
Right, and we were gonna check into our money, but I have talked to all supervisors at my meeting and. Okay.
Any more comments?
I have a comment. And let's let the board know that as of this afternoon, um, in the general fund, I have received, we have received one half of our coronavirus virus local fiscal recovery fund, in the amount of two hundred twelve thousand, two hundred sixty-eight dollars, that is half. We will be receiving the other half shortly. Well, in the new year is what I mean, and we will also, um, be able to gather in that, those monies that will be, um, divided between the counties that apply and the townships that apply, from those townships and municipalities that did not apply for this, so there's.
Oh, oh.
So we will get that by the end of the year supposedly.
And so, yes.
It'll be minimal.
But it's something extra.
And so two hundred and twelve, two sixty-eight goes into our account today, and my thanks to the Bush Department.
Right.
For shepherding us all to.
When I was at the trustees retreat, um, then Neil shared it, he was saying there's some township, there's federal money out there, and some townships don't take it as a matter of, that's why he said, you're diserving your constituents.
Constituents.
Yeah. Go, if it's out there.
Because they don't want to have to deal with Congress or court, like what you said about.
Well, some, some is more ideological.
I don't know what the ideological is, that, that money helped us pay for all of the transitions here that we needed to bring this building up to date so we could have elections here.
If we, if we could, like we had a couple bridges go through a critical bridge program, if we could have another three or four, heck yeah, we would have granted it, but we weren't big enough.
But I'm saying, yes.
I just have a quick question, and that's wonderful news, it is very, we're gonna get that money. The quick question is, you guys approved, we're going there through a antiquated tornado alert system, everyone in here has a cellphone for four hundred dollars a year.
That's not antiquated, they're all new.
But you didn't approve six hundred dollars extra a year for two of our employees have two extra days of relief and relaxation.
Oh, but we will, I mean, I think we just have to, what I'm trying to do in the employee handbook is that, um, I don't want that capped. My deputy has been here with twenty years.
Exactly, I think she deserves fourteen days as well.
So do I, and I, I would think the cap would even be more for her, so that's what I'm paying for.
As long as that goes through and, I mean, I think the tornado sirens are cool and everyone thinks they're cool, but we all have cellphones, they all explode when the cell, when.
But sometimes you know.
Wait a second, if, if a siren goes, if a tornado hits her in the middle of the night, nobody's gonna have their cellphones by her.
Have you heard those alerts all the time, the governor used them all the time during COVID, they went off all the time.
You talk to somebody that lives in Mayville, I have family down there.
I, I do disaster relief construction, I rebuild cities and towns all over the country.
This, we're getting these through the.
So, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
We've, the county has worked really hard to upgrade our systems, they all work.
But I'm just, my, I'm not saying, I'm saying if it's a budget thing, if it's a budget thing, if it's six hundred and whatever dollars.
No, it's not a budget, it, it was about the human.
Or four hundred dollars.
It's about that.
I'd rather spend six hundred dollars on the humans that are working for us than the four hundred dollars.
Excuse me one second, let me explain this, okay, when we worked on the handbook, we had a cap on that, and that's why I said if we're gonna have a cap, then we need to fix it.
Okay. Then I misunderstood, but like I said, if there's a bu, if there's a budget number, I'd rather spend that money on humans that are working for this township, then.
Yeah. I want the cap off.
So one of them wants to hear.
This is COVID money, that's not coming out of our budget.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because that four hundred dollars a year, if it's a human that works here, or I give it to them, then that, that's.
This is COVID money. No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, we all would, we all.
Yeah, we all would, we're just, we're, we're in the enviable, we're in the enviable situation that we have people who've worked here for years and years.
Yeah.
This is COVID money.
But if.
A few months ago, we lost.
But if there's availability to have emergency alerting to protect our residents, yeah, that we're gonna do that.
The county does, it's plenty of it sound, every Sunday or Saturday of the month, you hear a siren.
Not so much twenty-six mile.
There's a lot of hearts and castles here that don't get us here this.
They're gonna widen it. Well, they should have done that when they rebuilt the bridge, that was stupid of them. No, this is other stuff that's going on that, that the county is doing, um, they're looking at stuff and
There's something else that you want to point out around the courtroom.
To do on twenty-six a mile, bringing in big businesses and stuff like that, that's what I meant.
So these, these, um, municipalities.
What we want, Mr., Mr. John Money do is to work with our planning commission and the people that want to build, build businesses in our townships.
Disaster. You had they gone by the wayside.
Our townships, they will do their site plans, so they have an easier time.
Except the state and counties will still have.
A smoother time, going through the planning commission and stuff.
The laws out there. We don't have all the counties that have, and counties are ready.
For the mercy, but many.
Oh, you don't want it? Oh, no, we don't have.
My ears just fit enough.
Not in our, not in our, not in our area.
First area in life, that one, oh, okay.
I've never heard.
At my farm, when I'm out there.
Do you hear it?
I also.
I, I, I still have, I have to point to you, to my, okay.
Is it public?
She was asking me a real question, I'm sorry.
Question a lot of what does disaster recovery.
I didn't, I just.
I, I have something else, I'll go for the board.
Okay. What?
Um, I did receive a letter and I put it with everybody's stuff that, um, we will now, from the. we will now, from the, from the Department of Treasury, our audit has been changed from annual to biannual, which means every other year. So that's some new five hundred dollars, you don't have to spend, but every other year to do the audit.
All right.
And we're very excited about that.
They've been, yeah, well, I, I, they've been going on, they are going on three nine nine O is our two twenty population.
Yes, so the two thousand ten population was forty-one oh five, so anything over four thousand, you have to hit up.
That just, that doesn't, that doesn't jive with what we've been getting with our revenue sharing, which is up.
I don't know.
But I'm not going to tell them that.
This is, this is from the Department of Treasury, they want to tell us, we don't have to do it by the two.
Anything else? For?
No, I make a motion to move here.
I'll support that.
Motion. Motion by Anderson, supported by Stevens, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Bye-byes.